All right, today is Wednesday. No, it's Wednesday, yeah, Wednesday, September tenth, twenty twenty five, the time is now four oh one P M. I'm going to call this Joint Planning Commission and City Council Meeting to an open. So we'll call to order. Is who's the is Jennifer the chair on this?
And the mayor is the presiding officer.
All right, let's go with it. All right. So the first topic that we have is the Joint Planning Commission and City Council meeting minutes dated June eleventh, twenty twenty five. Let everybody get a chance to read. David, you're on right online, can you hear us okay?
I am, yes, I can, thank you.
Perfect, all right, do you do you have a copy of the meeting minutes?
I do, and I've got no additions on my set.
Okay, so we want to.
I'll make motions, we accept the moves, second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
All right.
Any names? All right, unanimous, David, you good? Sorry.
I am good, thank you.
All right, um, number three discussion topic, so we'll start with B, so discussion of allowance of A T Vs on the public streets.
Let's do a quick, quick intro, so the planning commission, you know, we usually don't get into traffic. Talk about road standards and things like that, but the planning commission does deal with a lot of different things, and so it's a good think tank. And as far as the the council vetting ideas, it's one of those opportunities for the think tank. It's not like we're a huge jurisdiction with specialty committees. So just like staff gets to be a person of all trades, well, planning commission does too. My understanding, doing a quick review of the draft, is this applies to side by sides, not things with handlebars, four wheelers, motorcycles. And it is the mayor's thing.
Thing, I like that, it's the thing, so it's the it has been one of the topics that constituents have come to me about. Uh, in overwhelming numbers about having the ability to have side by sides available to for use um on the city streets, just like you see the slingshots. Run around here, right, so it's pretty much the same principle.
Can you define side by side?
Yeah, if do you have the ordinance pulled up or? So I actually wrote out a draft ordinance and and I'll take you back, started in February, ran it by at that time Acting Chief Hoag. We did research with other municipalities to see if, one, it caused increase in a draw for public safety, two, if it caused any additional accidents. Uh, he did the research on that, came back, and there was uh no additional concerns. I took it then and met with Sheriff Pixley, because there's also been some interest in having it in the county from the commissioner as well. So I wanted to make sure before I started walking down the path to really bring the ordinance to the city council proposal. I wanted him to look at it as well from his perspective, so that if in fact he was interested in it, or the commission was, that we were basically walking down the same pathway with the same rules, regulations, uh, it has to be, you know, street legal, has to have insurance on it, has to obey by the rules. Uh, you know, helmets eighteen and over, uh, and then obviously there would be a fee, an annual fee for uh the the city to collect on for them to be able to use them, so.
Just to be clear, Mayor, you're you're required that this this ordinance would be, like you said, has to be street legal, as defined by the D M V, all those, okay?
Yep, have to have a license.
Anybody's just gonna hop into their or their side by side takeoff.
Yeah, driver's license, you have to have insurance, it's basically like driving one of those slingshots, it just allows for the A T V, so it's not, it's not like a four wheeler. Um, it's it's literally like a side by side, uh, and I had a few things in it, and then Sheriff Pixley changed like you. Uh, I believe, if I recall, change it to eighteen years of age instead of sixteen, had the helmets on, but seatbelts are required, turn signals, everything that you would have on any other vehicle out on the road. And the other caveat is you could only go perpendicular to the highway, you could only cross Highway thirty, so you're not permitted to actually drive down the highway. So you could kind of crossed, uh, but you can't actually, you know, get on, let's say, Gable and go down to Columbia. You could cross on the side streets across the highway, but you can't drive on the highway.
It's the only exclusion in the highway?
Yeah.
So other than that, if you're legal, if you're, if it's legal, you can drive it up there.
Yeah, I mean, it it's just like if it's a car.
A lot of crossover city county, does the county have the same regulations?
That's that's, so that's the thing, right now, no, but there is interest from one of the commissioners, so when I wrote the ordinance, that's why I had Sheriff Pixley review it, so that he put his input in in it, uh, into it, so that if we did present something, it would already be, you know, that would be the same for the county and the city. Um, my concern was, you know, being able to collect fees for the people that would like to utilize them, you know, they'd have to have annual stickers when they present their insurance and all that kind of stuff.
Uh, they are licensed.
Yes, they're licensed, it's just like a car, so license, insurance, they have to be street legal, turn signals, all of that kind of stuff, lights, all that. Um, but um, I would want us to be able to collect fees from them, and not just like have the county necessarily start it, and then them be able to like these, but they would be susceptible to any other uh O R S for police services as well, for bailer to obey or anything like that. There's in that ordinance, if it was pulled up, uh, not this, but the actual one that I drafted, uh, we spent the time on, you know, having noise pollution and everything else.
And I I see the.
In mine, the one I wrote.
Okay, I I didn't see it on the draft, um, the latest.
I see the draft uses imports the existing O R S definitions for A T Vs class one through three, which I think is really clever, um, that'll keep us nice and consistent, so it's really, am I correct in saying that really the main addition to those three classes is sort of creating this class four, um, which would be uh different kinds of side by sides, am I understanding that right? I think that's under section two uh H.
And David, this was my first ever uh attempt at creating an ordinance, so there's no picking on me for this one, because I.
Again, I think I think this works well, I think it's, again, I think the fact that we're not, no pun intended, reinventing the wheel, um, we're just borrowing things from O R S is really great, that'll make life easy.
It wasn't just the O R S, so also grabbed it from other municipalities that had used it, and those are the same ones that Acting Chief Hoag had reached out to. Um, yeah, because one of the concerns I had was just if there was, you know, is there, was there a concern that it increased the, you know, police services, or did it cause additional accidents, and because I wouldn't want to introduce something if I knew that there was an issue there, and and there there wasn't an issue um with that at all.
Do you know which cities?
Um, yeah, I'd have, I have to go look, there was like three or four different cities, they're more down south.
Are the police ready to? Understand we're saying eighteen or over, uh, but are the police actually ready to stop people and do the checks? I mean, I.
Well, looking to the chief and the acting chief, there was no issue with it, I mean, I feel like I've I've run down that aspect of it as far as that goes. Um, it'd be no different than Andy stopping any other vehicle, I mean, I think I saw somebody stopped the other day for not having a helmet on a side by side or a slingshot, so, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, my my guess would be that the age thing is only going to come up, and if an officer sees someone that they they know is too young, or that that just looks way too young, or more likely, you know, if there's an accident, or someone stopped for another infraction, and the officer runs their license and says, whoa, you're too young to be driving this car, just like officers don't stop people for driving without a license on its own, they usually find that in the course of something else.
Yeah, and on the back of it is, you know, shows in here too, like I went in the definition of like the P P E for the helmets, the type of helmets, all of that kind of stuff, but also having that sticker visible on the back of the car or the the side by side too, so, you know, that would be something, I don't know what that fee looks like, I have something in my head on how much I think that we should charge for fees, it'd be up to council, but um, it would be displayed on the back, just like if you go down to Sand Lake or any other place, and you have to have that, you have to go through and provide all the information.
You have a class two sticker, so.
There you go, okay, yeah. Did I, was in there well enough?
Yeah.
It's.
What's your view of impact on roads? I don't know what tires.
It's defined in there, the type of, basically the tires as well, did, do you have that, uh, you're able to pull up, David, in there? I don't have my computer.
I'm just curious, I don't have a problem with this, doing those, they're like a huge draw for people to drive.
There is, yeah.
Scary to me, though. I definitely don't, I'm not a fan.
Have you used one?
Yeah.
You have, I mean, there's a lot of people that have them out here, and that's usually.
Use them on property and things like that, that are kind of designed for, but.
They go from road to off-road, so that would be a concern of mine, is that people using them on the road and then trying to evade police, quickly off-roading.
Um, we also had that issue with electric bikes, it's a long team, and pop out in the road. That's always been a worry of mine. Um, I also have concerns about how you feel on signaling somebody out for their vehicles. It's a fee that is not charged to other vehicles in the city. It's a good, more so here.
Yeah, I think, okay, I'm sorry, I don't think they would have to go through D M V, so it'd be separate.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's just a fee for one segment.
Correct, and then I think it would be more of a privilege, I look at this as more of like a privilege to be able to utilize one of these, if in fact they have them, and we're also looking for income revenue, and even though if it's de minimis, it's creating annual fees for those that want to drive them, or, you know, utilize them, and generally those that are going to be paying a fee for it and have to go through the process, you're not going to really have behavioral issues with those individuals either.
Yeah, I I wouldn't be terribly concerned about some inequality issue, um, people pay different kinds of fees for different kinds of vehicles at the state level already, I've got an electric vehicle, I pay extra on licensing, I know people who've got antique vehicles pay different rates, I I think that's fine, as long as everyone, you know, with an A T V is paying the same kind of fee, or the fee is applied equally, I think that would be fine, whether how people are going to feel about that, and where you set the fee to not, you know, dissuade enough people from using it is a policy question, but I I don't think there'd be a problem doing it.
Um, it's the individual's choice, too, you can choose not to do it, so.
Right, am I, am I correct in in guessing that part of the draw for this is just, you know, but enabling people to move their their A T Vs around without having to load them up onto a trailer and truck them to where they want to go?
So I've heard like multiple things, right, I've heard that, I've heard like, you know, just generally, uh, in the winter time, there is as cars for parking, there are lots smaller, more compact, I mean, it's just, I mean, there's a lot of them in this area um, in general, so I think it's just, in general, like you see the the slingshots that are being utilized around here, in fact, we have somebody that's already driving a side by side in the city.
I saw that.
Yeah. And and what and what they're doing is, you know, putting like more of a the tractor type, you know, I believe, uh, step on it so that they can be on the road, but if that's, if that's a draw, then we should make sure that everything is in place as far as insurance, and they have a license, and again, we can collect fees from it.
Sense. Uh, have we, I mean, I, it sounds like in in conversations with our various uh law enforcement folks, that you've already run down a number of the the potential concerns, just try to think if there's other stuff out there that people may have expressed that we need to be aware of, you know, I know we've we've talked about safety, we've talked about response uh rates, we've talked about road issues, um, kind of I I'm coming up blank on other stuff, I'm just curious if there is something that we're we're missing.
So I only have, for me, uh, I only have one thing that I think is missing, and it's we, I went through the whole thing with the acting chief, I went through the process with the sheriff, but we do have a new chief of police, and I have not gotten a response back from him, so for me, uh, that's a caveat that I have that like, that would be important for me to, you know, feel comfortable presenting to council, if in fact he didn't buy off on it, and I I don't have that answer as I sit here today, so. I think.
With this, wouldn't it be more appropriate for the working department, transportation, have have their uh all law, whatever, for the whole entire state, rather than individual towns and cities?
I like that either.
Yeah, we get autonomy that having it from the city, like, that piece of it, otherwise they would, what would work in other cities may not work here either, right, I mean, there was things that we pulled from, or I pulled from different municipalities that I thought, uh, we need to tighten it here where they were more lax.
So my understanding is, you know, these folks are out there, probably, um, and they go out with the same means, then they are illegal on that kind of points there.
I suppose it's where they were at, but my guess would be yes, and that would be county, I'm I'm guessing, I can't say for certain, but because of the fact that a commissioner expressed interest, and it's pretty well known, I think that there's probably more likely than not that that would be something they would consider in the county as well. Which again, which is why I was making sure that Sheriff Pixley had a say and made any of the additional corrections that he felt would be necessary, he'd feel comfortable with for in the county.
We use a quad in in, uh, I think it's, uh, farm up uh in the county, and you have a slow-moving triangle on the back, and that's all you're required to have, because it's part of the farm. The biggest, the biggest problem is, some of those roads in the county, um, people are driving too fast and would never, you know, so you've got to be careful, you, we sometimes we load it up in a trailer and take it where we want to go, but uh, that's just the county, it was some very fast roads, so, um, I think it was held to the same standards vehicles, and a licensed person driving it, you're, they can do the same damage or get hurt just as easy, seat belts are required, right?
Yep, seat belts.
So it's just a.
I do think that the scooters are like more of a hazard, the electric bikes and the scooters are more of a hazard than.
I've seen them now.
Hop out of nowhere, in fact, there's been accidents, what, two over the last couple of weeks where it's been, yeah, they just come out of parking lots and.
They don't stop for signs either, they found, you're discussing, so, I've had a very, a couple of very close calls, like, you're just lucky.
So when, yeah, this is on the agenda, I look at the, kind of, look at A T Vs now, since that's the point was that was used on the agenda, like and I'm just saying, even the association of A T V, A T Vs are saying that these are not made for for roads, so they're saying, you know, it's for offering these not all together, I guess, that's what I've looked at.
Yeah, I'd like to see that nomenclature, because you can take anything and make it street legal, so it, whether the original design, it's the tires, and it's like having a dirt bike, you can make street legal as well, so it depends on how they're being utilized.
I think another consideration is emissions, because they're not subject to the same emissions testing to cars and.
They're, well, they're they're not manufactured, produced, only just like they said.
I think that I have in there that has to have exhaust. I'd have to roll through, I I don't have my computer, but to do more research, but.
They aren't going to meet the D E Q emission standards.
Wouldn't have to.
Another fear I have is like, we're bringing this out here, so we don't believe you have the expertise, I don't think. Whereas we already, as I said before, our transportation, where they have the expertise on this, so we couldn't be able to just opt in, hospital, I don't know. Because if I don't look.
So I'm just gonna play devil's advocate, like the other, the other towns around the country and state that I've been to that kind of allow this, you're right, mostly are down south, they're mostly around the Oregon dunes, it's the same thing. Kind of cross to get where you need to go, snowmobiles are no different, really, up in the mountains, um, but that's different, because like, they're riding to go ride on the dunes, or they're riding to go ride in the snow. I get the point there, it's about the snow and winter, but other than that, really, it's not like a destination thing, it's not like you're gonna get in and go somewhere, I mean, I wouldn't. I mean, I wouldn't pay for this, but that's just me, I don't have, like I said, I don't have problems playing devil's advocate, I just don't see where people would want to drive their side by sides, I would.
I can't say that I would, I can't say I would either, like, we have them, like, a lot of people have them, well, I personally would not, that's just me either, but there's a large populace that does.
But it doesn't really hurt if we put these these uh parameters in place, so that we do get there, and somebody does want to pay all the money if do that, they can, I guess that's what I'm saying.
I think fees also, we haven't talked about that, not that it plays, but I think like, two hundred bucks a year, easy for the annual fees.
You're a few guy, what do you think, you like those fees?
I had polled, and I got generally one seventy-five per year, but I I think it should be around around two hundred per year.
How are you gonna administer tags and fees through City of St. Helens?
Yeah, it would be, that would be the goal, not to put more on staff, but it would be proof of insurance and license, and then you can get a tag for a year.
Who's gonna do the inspection of the vehicle to make sure it's street legal?
It's up to the owner, you could.
Yeah, it's up to the owner, just like now, like, if you go on the road and you don't have, you know, turn signals, and you don't have, you're getting a ticket, they'd still get it, they'd get a ticket just like in a car.
So they'll have to do some type of M L T type.
Uh, what?
M L T.
What's your abbreviation for?
Well, I mean, I think yes, I'm referring to the U K at this time, um, usually I'd bring in a vehicle to have inspected, the other thing checked out, and why, like, twice as.
I wouldn't see that in this, it's like, it's up to the owner, if you're gonna be responsible, and you don't want to be cited and get a ticket, you're gonna have it in order, it's gonna be street legal, it's specifically spelled out pretty clearly in the ordinance on what's permitted, not permitted, what's required.
Well, and you you could, we could even, um, yeah, include some educational material with the whatever packet of information people get when they get their um, their sticker, you pay your two hundred bucks, you get your sticker, you get a sheet of paper that says, hey, by the way, it's your responsibility to ensure that your vehicle is street legal, here's the ordinance, et cetera.
This is just a practical recommendation for the purposes that the ordinance, usually it's better in the ordinance to say that the fee is determined by a resolution of the council, rather than putting the number in the.
Yeah, and this was like the really the very first time I ever wrote in ordinance, it was back in February, so I had like a barely a month, so there's stuff that are legal and have to look at, but it was my best effort, Jacob, to.
I know, I'm not criticizing, it's just a casual observation.
That's much different, too, because I think it should be, at first I was looking at that, but then when I did a poll of people, they were like, ah, I'd say, what, what do you think would be reasonable to pay, and they're like hundred and seventy-five a year, and then, of course, then that's why I came up with two hundred, so that was just last, that was in February.
Yeah, so, got it, got it.
Is there any public hearings scheduled for here?
No, this is the first time that we've talked about it, uh, I think there should be one. I think.
Be interested to hear what people say.
Absolutely, I think that we should have a public hearing, but it's, and I agree with Jacob, that, you know, this is kind of a one-off kind of one, and it should come in front of planning commission as well, and again, I haven't gotten a response back from the new chief, so that's gonna weigh into it as well, if he doesn't feel like this is something that would be appropriate, then I think that kind of caboshes things probably.
I think it would probably be more of a public forum than a hearing.
Yeah, whatever, just do.
Yeah, no, I I get it. I'm the technicality person here, so.
So I'm I'm going to betray my naivety about uh certain aspects of A T Vs. What sort of top speed are we anticipating for our A T Vs here?
I, well, generally, they're right around twenty-five, I mean, it would be right here in the city, um, I mean, people can do crazy things with their A T, with their side by sides, but I mean, if they're putting, I don't even know what they put on it, NOS or things like that, but, you know, would not be.
You could soup something up.
Yeah, exactly, just like cars.
Yeah, no, that's that's helpful, because honestly.
So fast, right, super.
I'm looking it up, right?
Yeah, super fast.
Yeah, the, really, the the only sort of outstanding concern that I would have that feels at all relevant to the planning commission is just sort of a broader public safety question, um, of, you know, sort of people traveling in a vehicle that isn't designed to have the kind of crumple zones that uh, regular street motor vehicles have, but those vehicles also travel at much higher speeds, whereas I see this as more analogous to an e-bike or an e-scooter, in which case I think the stuff that you've already put in the draft around seatbelts and safety helmets would be sufficient, uh, so I would, I would certainly be comfortable, from a planning commission standpoint, advancing this to I guess, the next level of public consideration and debate, um, which I suppose would be the full city council.
Just via chat G P T, the sport models are typically about seventy-five to eighty-five miles an hour top speed, and the utilities are sixty to seventy, in the thousand C C range.
Okay.
Sounds about right, so it could be as fast as a car.
Yeah, and I I'm willing to believe that when you're going that fast in a an A T V, and you impact a structure, you're more exposed to damage than if you're in a closed vehicle, uh, but that, I think that is also the kind of thing that if the pub, A, I I'm not sure to what extent that is my business as part of the planning commission, like, is that a broader public policy issue versus a planning issue? B, that could be accounted for by having in the the ordinance and the license allowing you to use your A T V, you could have something that says you shall not exceed whatever miles per hour on city streets, and just call it good, since you're not supposed to be going that fast on city streets anyway.
It'd be a violation of the basic rule, right?
Exactly.
Whether you're in a car or whatever else.
Exactly, yeah, precisely.
You can still get a D U I I on electric bike, you're still, you can still get in trouble on that one.
You can, yep.
They, yeah, I've seen, I mean, wish I was coordinated enough to zipper wrong also.
Are you talking about the ordinance, so what you're talking about? I'm just kidding, you know, if you draft it, sir, it will be even more drag racing down Forest Street.
I I do think, again, to take a step back, though, David, I, I do think before it goes in front of, uh, you know, a public forum, which I think is highly appropriate, I I still, we gotta make sure that the chief is on board with this, I I feel like, and he just has not had a chance to review it at this point, from my understanding.
Yeah, makes sense.
All right, have we belabored this one?
Yeah, I, are you hoping to get um more from the commission, or this is just the general discussion for the sake of vetting?
Well, I I mean, I I don't really know if we're looking at a consensus to move it forward, if that's what we're doing, or if this was a general topic.
We get the chief to look at it, and either stamp his approval, and we move forward, because he's gonna have one in force it.
Yeah.
So.
I wouldn't want to do something with them.
He's good with it, and let's go to a forum, forum, well, no, what do we want?
Forum.
Forum.
Yeah.
We, this is the one with the forum.
This is, yeah.
Jurisdiction of the planning.
Well, it, yeah, it's just a, you know, it's a question, does the council want more input from the commission? Um, this was just a, I need to get the discussion moving, um, it seems like the forum would be most appropriate before the council, just for input and.
Yeah.
There might be things that people come up with that just were not thinking of here, regard, you know, that.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, do we need to take a vote on that, Lisa, or we we can, we just came to a general consensus?
Yeah, consensus is fine.
Then we're on, um, C, planning commission proactive item architectural standards.
And and we kind of, we put the proactive items as default, if it's a proactive item on the regular and in commission meetings, we put it on these charts, it's the default, should uh the groups want to discuss. Well, there's much update from the last time.
Well, Jennifer, she might, I need all that, so she's not here.
Didn't volunteer for that as well, Scott?
Did you have one of these, Scott? Did you have one of these?
Do.
The vacates.
Not much, I mean, it's, um.
Okay, so wait, are we, wait, are we moving on to that one? Are we moving on to, we don't have anything on architectural standards?
That's.
Okay, okay, so we'll move on to D, so planning commission proactive item vacant and underutilized storefronts. Okay, so we'll move on to D, so planning commission proactive item vacant and underutilized storefronts. Take it away.
Good, and that was Aaron, we, we're numbers out where um. Then uh, the one, next step is to go start walk our walks. Just haven't been, been busy, so she, so we haven't been getting together. Been fun, we're gonna get together. I reviewed again the uh. The Astoria, um, their, their code for that. I was doing like that, that it's easy, you know, that's a way to go pretty much, could be. Want to consider some more, but uh she also Jennifer uh Schumacher uh. Ran into the planner from Astoria that it was involved in the uh development of the code for that. And then she's going to be giving you an introduction through email to uh discuss. The uh, the code for her. So please look forward to that.
Take it up, Dave. It's been, it's good.
It was the former planner, not the current planner for Astoria. And just for the purposes of the minutes, anybody listening, um, Aaron is Aaron Salisbury of Main Street.
Yes. That's what we had discussed.
Well, I think Main Street's, Main Street's already done the legwork.
No, they've only done twelve buildings.
Well, they, they deal with businesses that want to come forward. They contact them and anybody can come forward when they put out the offer. For uh their Main Street program, which is is the award of of helping people to develop. And so it's out there and anybody can come and they've, they've done the walkabout. That you're talking about.
I don't think it's for, you're really looking at, they can.
You're not looking for, what are you looking for?
Well, well, look, there's a number of. Variables that, you know, that's said, and this could probably need to be expanded. Can't remember all of them. The software and the multi, I won't give access to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and along with the city to have access, that's the end game from my, my perspective.
If I remember correctly, about a year ago and there was a study that was done for the un, un uh. Bacon and underutilized and it was like a hundred and some, um, anybody remember that?
Yeah.
It was like through C C economic Columbia Economic Team or something and there's a hundred and like, like way more than I thought there was even buildings there that were. Bacon or underutilized.
Well, I did get the uh, the studies that has one. And but I don't know, it seemed all that update.
Guess I'm not just completely out here, so.
Excuse me, but I was just, is what it is. That's why we're just starting this, what we had raised on our last.
Hey, David, can you hear okay? You had a facial expression that suggested otherwise.
Oh, no, I I could hear fine. The reason I'm on Zoom is I've I've got some health issues that preclude being there in person and. It's a little, little uncomfortable. So if my face looks weird, it's got nothing to do with you, all to do with my health.
Just making sure.
Yep, appreciate it.
All right, well, it sounds like we have exhausted that. And then other business. Any other business? Is there anything that council can do to help with the planning commission at all or? Anything you guys need from us?
Um, uh, with uh, David, you were doing the uh. We're looking at amending the pilot until the fourth or for that. If I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, that we had to uh first submit it to ourselves in writing and vote on it and then. We submit it to the uh, the council.
Yeah, that, that's my impression and I, to avoid invoking the infamous uh. Public meeting rules, I did not circulate the draft I wrote to the other uh planning commission members directly. I sent that to to staff. Um, but I I believe it's, my impression is it's been sent around, so it it should be in process.
Yep, we, we do have it. Um, it's just that we postponed that discussion to the October meeting.
Gotcha.
And so we'll add it to a memo and. And I I I haven't honestly digested it much myself yet, but we we do have it.
Yeah, I have a vague reaction that the city attorney was going to be looking at the uh meetings and have their own interpretation of. That, is that my correct in that?
Um, that's something that Kathy had mentioned.
I think it would be useful if. If we, if the attorney isn't able to be at the meeting, it would be really useful to to at least have them be able to. You know, do a read of the draft and give us their thoughts in writing ahead of time because. I don't believe any of us on the planning commission have a background in that kind of issue and uh that's what city attorneys are for.
Well, I would say, I was stating that more in a general sense.
Yep, also, also useful.
I I think it had to do with the subcommittees.
Yeah, subcommittees, that's what I started.
Subcommittee issue?
Yeah.
And I I haven't heard, um, I haven't heard anything recently from Kathy on that.
We haven't received legal advice yet. Um, she's really busy, so I think this just kind of uh is on the back burner.
Is it Ashley?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. I think there are plenty of stuff to do. Um, I I'm glad you brought that up, though. Because since we're having this joint meeting, the one thought occurred to me and I plan to talk about this at the next meeting, but since we're here. So the, the ordinance talks about three consecutive meetings without an absence. It's an assumed. Um, lack of duty and this gives you an opportunity to get booted from the commission. And that ordinance was drafted um before we had these joint meetings. My impression is that the attendance should apply to the regular meetings and not the joint meetings. Um, however, you know, now that we have minutes and there's a little bit of decision-making aspects to these meetings. Um, it just makes me think about that. But my, my concern is being punitive for the joint meetings for positions that are volunteer-based. Maybe a little aggressive.
The, since this was drafted for the planning commission meetings itself, it would be. You'd have to have a line between between meetings and it would be effective.
Yeah, the, the, the ordinance just says meetings. It doesn't specify. And so that, that, you know. Specifying what, what meetings count is probably gonna be an aspect. Um, but with those here. Do you think the joint meetings should count from a mandatory attendance standpoint? Now, we have to have quorum is to have the discussion, so that's kind of another, another little wrinkle.
Well, if you, if we're talking about the, the draft ordinance that I put together. I think that could accommodate these joint meetings because. The trigger condition there is someone being, missing meetings without notice effectively. Uh, but I think someone could give notice, for example, that they can't make these joint meetings because they work until five o'clock and they'll just never be able to be at these. Um, and I would think that. I think it's important to be able to have some sort of ability to account for situations like that because at least up until this point, to my knowledge, we haven't. Had an expectation on the planning commission that people be available during business hours. Uh, because the meetings are usually in the evenings and so we've had people apply who. Pretty regularly work until five or five thirty. I don't think we could hold those people accountable to going to meetings uh and not give them a way to say that it was an excused absence. Or I suppose we could, I just don't think we should.
I agree with.
I personally kind of see these as a bonus. I think official business is done at the regular meetings. I think that's what should. Should figure into that discussion. One kind of thing that was on my mind, though, is. I wanted to bring up with this group and maybe it'd be appropriate with the whole group here, but do you feel that this number of joint meetings is? A good number. I don't know, to me personally, seems like they come around awful quick and then today we haven't really had anything to discuss, so. Is four a year good or is, would two be sufficient?
Think it's tough to answer because.
I think having two scheduled and then if something special is happening or that we need to consider, you know, have a special call for.
So just looking at the minutes, we haven't had the best attendance. Um, but maybe if, maybe if we started with two. People could plan for that a little easier than four.
What was the initial objective for the joint, like an alignment? Like what was when, when the joint meetings first started? What was the objective?
I was on it for nine years and I brought it up where I felt that we would work pretty hard. Jacob, Jacob had really put together. You know, really comprehensive view of what we're working on and we would spend hours up to midnight sometimes. Having interviews with people and and uh, uh, yays and nays and um. We worked really hard and it seemed to me, I was getting frustrated because it'd come up in city council and they go, nah, we're not gonna do what they recommend. And so I felt we weren't expressing ourselves good enough. And that's what we started that um, you know, with the, with the council.
So if there is a possibility, if there was only two per year, but then there's something that came up, a large project or something that really. There's a lot of calories being spent in.
Yeah, we could always have a special.
Have a special one.
Yeah, the, the mechanism was inclusion.
Yeah, it makes sense.
And and to, this, for a while, there was this increasing rift between the com- commission and the council. I was like, all right, let's, let's kind of bring this. And and it's worked well for that, but now that you have more joint meetings with other committees. That a lot of meetings for the council.
But it just seems more.
Yeah.
I do think they're beneficial and I'm looking forward to meeting with the Parks Commission next month and I think. I think it's good to get together and sit down face to face and have a discussion, but. I just, I looked at tonight where we just really didn't have much to talk about and I thought, are they really needed that often?
So you think we should go down to two?
Three, well, I think we also need to.
Maybe we include that in the attendance discussion?
Yes.
They could be, they could be involved in the discussion, but they're not here.
Yeah.
Planning commission wants as far as the joint meetings go and then we go from there.
Yeah, I I think that makes sense. Um, we include it with the attendance discussion. Um, and that way that whole package of stuff can be uh invited to the council for information or what have you.
When might we see David's? The product for the uh, on the changing of the code for the IHS?
Uh, my intent would be as a normal part of uh planning commission packets. So if it's for the October one. I I could send it out earlier. Um, though I, you know, right now I have zero input. But if you want extra time to digest it, you know, I could, I could send it to the commission. Just say, don't reply.
Anybody have anything else for other business? Everybody just wants to go enjoy the rest of the sunshine while we have, it starts raining on us. All right, Jacob, you have anything else?
Nope.
All right, well, then we will uh close this uh joint meeting at four forty-five P M.